And welcome to the final public board meeting of the Halton District School Board for 2022. Tonight, we have both trustees and staff in person and online. We will be again using the Creston system for voting and speaking, and I remind you, please, to be cognizant of the speaking order and wait for either myself, the chair, or the vice chair to recognize you in both private and public sessions. I'm asking that we please be mindful of our commitment to fulfilling the business of the board in a respectful manner. I'll start with roll call. Trustee Ahmed. All right, he might be joining us a little bit later. Trustee Amos.
I am here, thank you.
Good evening. Trustee Baxter.
Present.
Good evening. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you, I am here.
Trustee Diodati.
Present.
Trustee Gray.
Hello.
Trustee Oliver.
Good evening, everyone.
Vice Chair Rocha.
Here.
Trustee Collard.
I'm here.
And Trustee Zhang.
I'm here. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Director Ennis, could you just let us know what senior team are here for our private session this evening?
Thank you and good evening, Chair Shuttlerworth and to all trustees. We have a full complement of staff here to support the meeting. Thank you.
Great. Trustee Zhang, would you like to move a motion to go into private session?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. And Trustee Oliver, would you like to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any debate? See none. Are there any objections to moving into private session? And again, see none. We are now in private session. Thank you very much.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and again, welcome to our final meeting of the 2022 year for the Halton District School Board. The date is December the fourteenth, and I would like to welcome all our guests joining us this evening online. Although many of us are able to be here tonight, we've also been able to be flexible and work with those who are unable to be here with us in person. That's allowed us to use a hybrid approach, allowing people the flexibility of attending from outside of the boardroom. I'd like to remind everybody, conversations and respectful debate are the hallmarks of our board. With many new faces at the table, it's so important that we continue to create a safe and respectful discourse to guide us through our meeting. As we did roll call previous to private, I would just like to take one second to welcome both trustee Rogero and trustee Wang to the table, as well as trustee Ahmed, who joined us a little bit later this evening. Director Ennis, just checking in, that staff that are here this evening.
Thank you so much, Chair Shuttleworth, and good evening, everyone. We have a full complement of staff, both online and in person, to support tonight's meeting.
Thank you so much. And tonight, trustee Amos will be honoring the land.
Thank you. Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations in the Métis. From the Anishinaabe to the Adirondack, the Haudenosaunee, and the Métis, these lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in Indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty lands, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that walk before us, and all of the wonderful elements of creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thank the Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you so much. So we are now up to the agenda, which is item 1.4. Trustee Gray, as you pop on in, would you like to move a motion to approve the agenda tonight?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Diodati, would you like to second that motion?
I would, thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there any discussion surrounding the agenda this evening? Seeing none, are there any objections to approving the agenda? And again, seeing none, by unanimous consent, the agenda is approved for this evening. So in relation to our agenda this evening, I'm just wanting to check if there are any declarations of possible conflict of interest. Wonderful. Seeing none, that brings us up to item 2.0, delegations and presentations to the board. And tonight, we're going to start with the student trustee report. Trustee Rogero and trustee Wang, do you have a report for us this evening?
We do.
Wonderful. Go ahead. Thank you very much.
So greetings, trustees, parents, and staff. With just over a week left, we hope everyone is doing well and is looking forward to the winter break. Before we begin, we would like to remind the students who may be watching that Student Senate Subcommittee's and the Mental Health Preliminary Task Force applications are still open for grades seven to 12 students, and they can be accessed on the Student Senate website, and they close on January 13, 2023. There's no specific recommendations or qualifications we're looking for. So if you're interested in applying, we encourage any student to reach out to Cindy and I to learn more, or check out the Student Senate website and our Instagram. I would like to pass it over to trustee Wang, who will be discussing student trustee elections.
So this year, trustee Rogero and I, along with our staff advisors, have started the process of preparing for student trustee elections. And it's earlier than we typically do, but we thought that that would work well with like the way that secondary schedules work. So on Monday, we met with our elementary and secondary staff advisors to review the elections process and planned out the beginning stages, which includes things like the letters that are usually sent out every year, as well as the information meeting for all interested candidates. We'll be reaching out to all of the staff in the board who are involved in the election process to review timelines and rules very soon. For now, we're hoping to officially launch this year's elections to students in late January, with voting to take place on Thursday, February 23, 2023. So mark your calendars. If any students curious in this position has any questions or wants to reach out, you can find trustee Rogero and I by email or through Instagram. We're always happy to help and share our experience.
This past Monday at MM Robinson High School, I had the wonderful opportunity to co-host the first episode of the Parent Engagement Talk Show, which was brought up at one of the first board meetings, called Talking About the Things That Matter with People Who Care. And so that was alongside Superintendent Flahout and the parent or the pick committee co-chair Saajamon. This debut episode welcomed student mental health lead Michelle Bates, and we engaged in a rich conversation about how parents can help their children leading up to exam season, and the importance of looking past grades for validation. I would like to thank the communications teacher at MMR, Mr. Lee, and the team of students who are working to put this together. And I would also like to acknowledge the group of students who welcomed me to the school. That was really sweet to have that warm welcome at MMR. So thank you to Mr. Flahout for involving the student trustees on this opportunity, and we are super excited to continue this partnership. And we look forward to continuing the episodes and for everybody at the board to see some of the great things that the pick committee is doing. So I'll pass it over to Cindy.
And so that concludes our final student trustee report of 2022. We're extremely happy to be ending off this year on such a positive note. Throughout the holidays, Student Senate certainly won't be stopping. You can keep up with all of the initiatives, such as the ones Ethan mentioned at the beginning of this report, through Instagram at HCSB Student Senate. On behalf of both of us, we wish everyone a happy holiday season and a wonderful New Year's. As always, we're happy to answer any questions or comments.
Thank you so much. Do any of the trustees have questions for our student trustees? Well, I have one. So you were speaking of student trustee elections happening on February the 23rd, and I know that in the past, trying to get engagement and getting people out to vote hasn't reaped high numbers. So I'm wondering, you both have such creative and innovative ideas. What types of opportunities are you going to do to try to build on the number of students that are actually voting for the student trustees?
Sure. So we've actually talked about this quite extensively at our last meeting, where we met with our staff advisors. Trustee Rogero actually brought up a really kind of like unique idea to have our student senators kind of set up voting booths at each of their schools, maybe it's in the library, things like that, kind of like replicating off of like the voting procedure usually done at like elections, but like student run and things like that. But it's a bit difficult because people have to sign on onto their own like emails and things like that in order to vote. So also, so it's kind of hard to facilitate that like tech-wise. But we were thinking that even if we don't necessarily put in like full-on voting booths, we can still have like posters and like this year, what like I think you can tell that trustee Rogero and I are really trying to use our senators to be the links to all of our schools and trying to have them kind of promote things instead of just relying on trustee Rogero and I. And so we really hope that through them, we can reach more students and have not only more students vote, but also more interested students applying to run for a student trustee.
Yeah, definitely making sure that we're going to be working with especially library services. A lot of our schools and our high schools have those partnerships with the libraries. So setting up those boots of those booths in conjunction with them is kind of our first kind of step, and figuring out how can we make it accessible for students and really eliminate those barriers. So really focusing on that unique idea of voting in the libraries and creating a safe space so students don't have to feel that they need to take their own time away from class and that sort of thing, you know, it'll be an inclusive area for students to go down at the library during break, and it'll be a really good area. So we're working kind of to develop a kit, hopefully to send out to the library services and the library team at the board, and we can work with them going forward. So that's really our strategy going into election season.
Great. And a quick follow-up. So with that, the voting, sort of the time that you can vote on the day. So I seem to remember last year, and I, who's that? Would that be you? You're looking at me? No. I just know that last year, there was a limited time. So I'm wondering how, and I don't know if you'll know the answer to this, but are they opening up the time for student, maybe trustee Oliver, right? No, I don't know. But I just know that that might be something to consider, because I seem to remember last year, you couldn't vote till a certain time, and it ended at a certain time. So I was just wondering about that.
Right now, we have it down as 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM. And I think the reason for that is because the candidates are set to be announced at 6:00 PM. And so they want like 30 minutes kind of like buffer time for the systems to like count like who won and things like that. And then at 6:00 PM, it would be announced. So I'm not really sure what if there's like any reasoning behind why they want to announce it at 6:00 PM. That's just what we have down on like our dog from our staff advisors. But I think we can look into it. If we can like push it back or even do it the next day, like do the announcement the next day so that people can vote later, because I know some people, some students certainly kind of forget that they should vote, and then it's like already like 7:00 PM, and they're like, oh, I missed it. And then so that's, that's a, that's really a shame that we couldn't get those votes in. And so I think we'll definitely look into pushing it back and seeing if we can.
Great. Thank you very much, both of you. Seeing no further questions. Again, thank you so much for your report. And that brings us up to delegations and presentations. Again, we have no delegations this evening. However, we do have two presentations from two new presentees. First of all, we have the Bullying Prevention and Intervention presentation from Superintendent Fowler.
Thank you, Superintendent Frankovich, for that technical assistance. Good evening, and through you, Chair Shuttleworth, I'm pleased to present to you the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. As you know, bullying prevention and intervention is a very important topic in all schools across the province and around the world. And truly, it is our way of looking to ensure we're responding and supporting all of our students, because we know what an impact this can have on students. So I have a presentation for you today, and I'll take you through that. And then we'll obviously have some questions, et cetera, afterwards. Just got to get the right things out here. Okay. So the Halton District School Board, as you know, is committed to the establishment and maintenance of safe, caring, equitable, and inclusive learning environments that maximize the learning potential of all students and ensure a positive school climate for all members of the school community. As we also know, school communities are well positioned to respond to all forms of bullying, to educate students on bullying prevention, and to promote healthy relationships, to notice troubling challenges and changes in behavior, and address incidences of bullying with students. And this is all part of our PPM 144. And the reason we have this new and revised plan is because PPM 144 has recently been revised. And so this plan is in response to that revision. As a board, we do recognize that bullying adversely affects a student's well-being and ability to learn. We know that it adversely affects school climate, including healthy relationships. And we know that bullying, including cyberbullying, is a serious issue, and is not acceptable in a school environment, in any school-related activity, or in any other circumstances outside of the school that continue to have an impact inside the school. So the highlights of this project really, truly are there on the slide for you. It is a joint project to let you know that this is a multi-portfolio approach. So it involves our Human Rights, Equity and Inclusion, Indigenous Rights and Education team. It also involves our Mental Health and Student Well-Being team, and of course, Safe Schools has a role to play. We do believe that, and we are grounded in the fact that feelings of safety and inclusion are essential to the academic success and the overall well-being of all students and families in our school. The new PPM highlights specifically the seven forms of bullying, and the recognition of the impact that these have on student mental health and well-being. Inside our plan, we will highlight for you an action plan, an administration guide, teacher guide, and various resources that can be used to support schools in developing their own action plans. We're going to talk a little bit about data, because of course, the data is very important, and it helps to identify areas of need, especially greatest areas of needs, and you'll hear more about that as we move forward. And we are going to highlight for you the overall outcome of this plan, in that each school will be creating their own well-being and bullying prevention intervention action plans at the school level, and using data to accurately monitor the success of the implementation. So just to talk a little bit about the, about the data. So this data comes to us from both Have Your Say, as well as our Student Census data. And so I'm going to take you through a very high-level overview, and again, we can dig into it a little bit more afterwards. So first of all, the data that we have from Have Your Say is anonymous data, and it needs to be gathered in an anonymous way, and so we cannot disaggregate that data. But you can see from there that although our results, you know, do demonstrate that the majority of our students are not experiencing bullying on a regular basis at the elementary level, level, the numbers are high. And even if there's just 1%, it's work we have to do. So you can definitely see that, that our largest area of need is with regards to verbal bullying at the elementary level. For the secondary level, the numbers, verbal and social. So verbal has come down a little bit, but social has gone up. And again, we are still seeing that there are some students that are being impacted by bullying at the secondary level. This is a really important one. We, we'll hear me talk about it a little bit later, but bullying is directly related to feelings of safety at school. And it might not be an individual student that is experiencing the bullying, but it could be one of their friends. And it just, it all contributes to a feeling of safety at school. So again, the majority of our students either strongly agree or agree that they feel safe at school, but there are definitely some students who are not feeling safe in our school. Same thing with secondary. The results are actually very similar between the two panels. And school climate is exactly what we talk about. We talk about feelings of safety. We talk about feelings of positive and we climate. And we also talk about feelings of belonging in a school. And again, all interconnected with regards to how we feel in regards to being bullied and the bullying that's happening in our school. So the data that we receive with regards to bullying can be disaggregated from our student census. And so while it's not specific to the bullying question, it does speak to school climate. And so this data that you're seeing is, is not anonymous and it is mandated for us to collect this data by the Anti-Racism Directorate and the Equity Secretariat. So that's why we, we are looking deeply at the disproportionality that exist in our schools. So based on the information you can see in the graph above you, you can see that our Black students are overrepresented in feelings of ratings of low positive school climate, 1.3 times more likely to report low ratings. Our Indigenous students are 1.2 times more likely to report a low sense of school climate than their overall presence within the rest of the population would predict. And our Latinx students are 1.1 times more likely to experience or report low ratings of positive school climate. We also disaggregated the data by gender and identity. And students who identify as gender diverse are 1.7 times more likely to endorse low ratings of positive school climate. When it comes to sexual orientation, again, students who identify as sexually diverse on the spectrum of sexually, sexual diversity are 1.48 times more likely to endorse low ratings of positive school climate. Students with an individualized education plan or IEP, again, are 1.26 more times more likely to endorse low ratings of positive school climate. The next section we really looked at is we looked at our school belonging. So that sense of really being connected and belonging in your school. And again, the, the data does again, continue to show a disproportionality for our Black, Indigenous, and Latinx students. When it comes to disproportionality by gender in terms of school belonging, once again, we're seeing our gender diverse students are 2.27 more times, times more likely to endorse low ratings of school belonging. And it continues again on the same trend with regards to students who identify as being on the sexual diversity spectrum. Similar statistics with regards to our students who are, have an individualized education plan, 1.5 times more likely to experience a sense, a low sense of belonging in the school. I will say that this data is in, it's hard to see. It's, it's one of those things that makes you stop and think when you, when you see it and you think about our students in our system who experience a low sense of belonging, a greater impact of bullying, and a lack of safety at school. These things impact greatly their academic success and achievement overall. So as a board, our focus with this plan truly is to address the disproportionality that exists within this data so that when we redo this data in 2024, we will see a great improvement in the data that, that we've shared with you today. I will also say that in talking with my colleagues from across the province who work in the areas of safe schools, equity, and also mental health and well-being, these statistics that we're seeing are, are very much similar throughout the province of Ontario. It is not a Halton-specific concern. So as you can imagine, the goals of this work are as follows. And, and they're listed there. They're very similar from the sense of they are all specific to addressing disproportionality for Indigenous and Black students, students who identify as gender diverse, sexually diverse, and students with individualized education plans. And we're looking to decrease the number of students who experience bullying, to increase the percentage of students who feel safe at school, and to increase the sense of, the sense of a positive school climate for all of these students as well. The other thing that I would like to share is that while we're focusing on addressing these disproportionality, everyone benefits. So it really is about developing a positive, trusting, relationship-focused and centered program within our schools so that we honor the voices of the students so that they feel respected and welcomed and they feel that they have a voice. So that's really the goal of the work that we're going to be undertaking. And we're, we're quite excited about the impacts we're going to be able to have. In terms of a system rollout, obviously a huge part of this, we did a soft launch of this plan at our Family of Schools meetings. That's where we meet with all of the principals and vice principals across the system. We did that at the November Family of Schools meeting and we directly linked this with our SIPSA well-being goal. And as I've mentioned before, the nice thing about our SIPSA well-being goal is that it is connected to all areas of our multi-year plan. In January, we're having a joint department presentation at the FOS. And ultimately, the entire Family of Schools meeting is going to focus on the rollout of this plan, but also the SIPSA well-being goals and how schools can address them. So again, it's a multi-portfolio presentation with a lot of great teamwork and, and that will be rolling out in January. Schools will be developing their SIPSA well-being action plans that include these, again, the, the goals. How are, how are you going to address these goals in your school? And that work will come to us as a board in February. So those will all be submitted by schools in February. In the spring of 2023, we're looking to offer a variety of sunrise and sunset learning sessions for all Halton District School Board staff. We recognize that this is not a teacher issue. This is not a principal issue. This has involved the whole system. This is our community. This is our custodial staff. This is our secretarial and office staff. These are our educators that are in the classrooms. It is the parents that are there. So these, these rollouts, the programs and learning sessions will be offered to everyone because we are really truly looking to ensure that everybody understands the plan and the work that we're doing towards it because it's so incredibly important and critical. Over the course of February 2023 until June 2024, we will be working on those SIPSA goals and implementing items specific to the schools that align within the action plan. And then in the spring of 2024, we will be re-engaging with survey data to again, look at how far we've come because accountability and being accountable will help us to ensure we stay the course and, and that we're actually achieving what we're setting out to do. And I believe that I just added some resources there. There are so many resources out there. These are just a few of the ones that we started with. But we're really excited because we know that individual schools will be collaborating with members of their, of their learning team, whether that's their parents, their community partners, working with their instructional program leaders. They will probably come up with a whole host of other resources that can also be shared more widely and broadly. So that's just some of the ones that we started with. And I think that's the end of the formal presentation.
Thank you so much. I see already a name on the list, trustee Collard.
Thank you. Through you to the presenter. I noted that you had five different categories of bullying and one of those categories was sexual. Sexual can mean a number of things to, to people depending on their perspective. Sexual could be misogyny or sexism. It could be anti-LGBTQ+. It could be transphobia, homophobia. Did you tease out that element or did you just reference sexual bullying? Because I, it concerns me that it means different things to different people.
So I'm going to ask for clarification because I, I want to, I'll go back to the slide. I think you're talking about data, right?
Yes.
Okay. So sexual bullying was not a-
Earlier.
Earlier, yeah. It's just, so we had bullying in general. And they've got sexual bullying. So I do not believe that, I, I, I would have to get back to you on that. I don't know the specifics of the question that was asked. So that would have been on your Have Your Say data. And I can certainly get back to you on that one.
Thank you. I think it would be important for us to tease out the difference between the LGBTQ+ community and sexual bullying that's misogyny.
Absolutely. And, and I will say that, that it would fall under one of the seven forms of bullying that it, it could potentially fall under the, the human rights bullying when we're, we're looking at that. But I do see your, because both misogyny and the others would fall in there. So, but I will get back to you on the specific question that led to that outcome. Thank you. Great question.
Thank you. Trustee Rogero.
Thank you. Through the chair to Superintendent Fowler, I just wanted to ask specifically about the disproportionality of belonging by students of sexual diversity. I'm particularly concerned by the rate of 1.86% compared to 0.83% for heterosexual students. So I wanted to specifically ask, what are some of the, the plans in place to address the disproportionality when it comes to bullying within our schools? Is there a specific plan? And what are, what are, how are students going to potentially be involved in that? But it's, it's quite concerning to see that rate be quite high compared to cisgender students within our board.
Yes, great question. Through you Chair Shuttleworth to trustee Rogero. All, I can tell you that all of our strategies that we're going to be using are specific to addressing disproportionality, whether it is for sexually diverse students, whether it's for students who are from, identifying with a particular race or gender. And there's a variety of different measures. And if you don't mind, I can share just a few highlights. I don't think I have an answer specific to sexually diverse students, but I do believe that all of these strategies are encompassing and recognizing the diversity that exists and valuing, celebrating, and centering that. So for example, we will be explicitly teaching and following up and having a return to learning plan after incidents of racist remarks or homophobic remarks. And that is directly in alignment with our discriminatory and harmful language protocol. So we're really looking to embed that protocol with a bullying response protocol as well that allows us to educate not just the student that caused the harm, not just the student who was harmed, but to educate more broadly the entire class through an educational opportunity where we talk about the issue that took place. That's for, that's one example. Another example is the creation of affinity spaces within schools. So for example, we would be looking to engage our students, our staff, our families in the creation of GSAs or Black Student Advisory Groups. So different things like that that will provide a safe space where students can, can, you know, develop these skills and become proud and they can celebrate the successes and, and really just, you know, embrace that. Another one, for example, would be really trying to focus our curriculum on centering the diverse voices within our, within our classrooms and ensuring that our teaching is culturally responsive and relevant to all of the learners in the classroom and that everyone feels like they have a voice and choice in their learning. So, you know, using those teachable moments that come up in classrooms is, is really going to be a critical part of this. And we're really hoping that we can empower educators to open up those lines of communication and to go deeper when something that happens. And hopefully over time, it'll just become part of that regular practice.
Great. Thank you very much. Trustee Gray.
Thank you. Through the chair to Superintendent Fowler. I was interested in the percentages of those students who feel safe at school. I think I recorded 76% elementary, 74% secondary. And we, you identified the parameters of physical, verbal, social, and cyber. And, and that's, that's a wonderful baseline starting point for us to know. But my question is, how are you collecting or do you plan to collect students' voice and their ideas on how they might feel safer at school?
Through you Chair Shuttleworth to you trustee Gray. Thank you so much. We have a lot of ideas. We, I actually have ideas to work with our amazing student trustees on a number of projects. And one of them really is to find ways to elicit student voice with regards to their feelings of safety. So we have our student senate. But one of the things trustee Rogero and I have been talking about is really making sure that we're seeking all voices in the schools and diverse voices and hearing from students. So we have the ability to use Google Forms that are completely anonymous to gather that feedback. We may be doing so social media campaigns. Definitely, there's lots of great ideas. And I, and I truly think that probably what'll happen is it's going to happen a bit more on that micro level within the schools, so each school, because different schools will have different things. So rather than just blanketing, this is sort of the blanket board response, but I feel that each school might put that in their own individualized plan. And then they would get the, the feedback that's specific to their school. So 100%, we really think that student voice is the, is the most critical in all of this. And thankfully, they, they've spoken to us loudly and clearly here telling us that there is an issue.
Thank you. Vice Chair Rocha.
Thanks. Your slide talks about five different types of bullying, but you mentioned there were seven. So what are the other two that aren't listed here? And then my second question, we have, we have many students who attend our schools virtually. So how is their voice being captured? Although they not, they might not be in a physical building, they may experience some of the other bullies like cyber and social. I'm not sure which ones. But how are we planning to capture their voices?
So I'll speak to your first question. This data is from last spring. So the PPM is, is just rolling out. So the seven forms of bullying, as noted by this, might differ from that slightly. But they recognize now in the, in the province of Ontario with our, through our ministry, human rights bullying. So that's racism, homophobia, sexism, religious discrimination, ethnic discrimination, or other forms of bias and discrimination. Emotional bullying, where it's focused on body size, appearance, ability, real or perceived, and classism. Social relational bullying, rumors, including excluding others, humiliation, intentional public gestures. Physical bullying, pushing, tripping, shoving, tackling, other physical intimidation. Verbal bullying, name-calling, insults, threats, sexist, racist, or transphobic comments. Causing harm to one's property, breaking, taking, damaging, or vandalizing. And then cyberbullying, which could be sending or sharing hateful, insulting, offensive, and/or intimidating electronic communication or images via text messages, emails, et cetera. Revealing information considered to be personal, private, and sensitive without consent. Making and/or engaging or participating in fake accounts on social networking, sites to impersonate, humiliate, and/or exclude others, and excluding or disrupting access to a student on purpose from online chat groups, access to accounts during digital gaming sessions. So those are the forms of bullying. And I believe that next time when we do the Have Your Say survey, it will be updated. I can see where some of these directly fit, but I think what they've done is stretched them a little bit. So social was captured slightly differently here. So that will hopefully align a little bit better moving forward. In answer to your second question, the students that are learning virtually. So at the secondary level, our students are learning virtually, but they still have teachers and they still have a principal and a vice- and they still have a principal, an vice principal, that they can report issues and incidents to. And their teachers are still teaching the exact same lessons that the school-based students will receive. I appreciate that it's difficult. Some children might not want to walk down, you can't just go and visit the principal. You probably have to put it in an email or it has to be a phone call. But we really do want to hear from those students. So when we do any type of survey or any type of feedback gathering, we will be messaging our VSS students as well. In addition, our elementary students, again, while they, they might not be part of a particular virtual school in general, they're all attached to schools. And those classes, again, are staffed by a teacher who's connected to the school and is receiving the exact same, you know, resources and training, et cetera. So hopefully, they'll be able to be in a position to feel like they can share their voice and be asked in the exact same way.
Thank you. Trustee Wang.
Thank you. So I was curious about the bullying protocol that I think you mentioned in passing while answering a question earlier, because I know that we have the discriminatory and harmful language protocol. And I think more students have begun to know how to report those types of like bullying or those types of comments that align with harmful and discriminatory language. But when it comes to the other, like several different types of bullying that you mentioned, I as a student just don't know how I would kind of go to my school or go to the school board to address those types of issues. And so I was curious about that and if there's like a plan to just raise awareness amongst students about how they can kind of report those types of issues that fall outside of harmful language.
Yeah, absolutely. Every school has a website and on that website, there is a button where you can report bullying. So I think the fact that we need to do a better job at advertising that. I do believe when it was first put out there, I think there probably was quite a deal of communication around it. But it is something we're going to have to re-message. And I think that that'll probably form part of our spring launch. As we know, this is sort of something we're just filtering through the staff at this point. But in the spring, there's definitely going to be a really fulsome launch. But in addition, your second question with regards to the discriminatory language and harmful protocol, we're looking to create something. We actually thought about just adding in the bullying piece to that one because the steps are so similar. But we really understand that there's so much, there's so, there's quite a few differences. And we really want to leave and honor the fact that that one needs to be a standalone because we do have a number of, well, I guess it's bullying as well. But we want to specifically leave it as its own and then create one that's specific to bullying, but encompasses all of the other forms of bullying. So that's in the works right now, along with a variety of the teacher resources that we're still developing. But definitely spring of 2023. And if you wanted to share with your, your student senators, please feel free to let them know that the bullying report button on every school website goes directly to the principal. So and, and they will receive that report. And then the principal does have an obligation to follow up on that.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through you Chair to Superintendent Fowler. My question actually kind of builds on trustee Wang's question. And that was, first of all, all the elementary school websites have that button. Do secondary schools have it as well?
I believe all schools have it. I would need to, yeah, I'm seeing shaking heads from my colleagues, yes.
Okay. And I'm wondering if you have looked at any trends, like is there a, an increase or decrease in the use of that reporting facility and the types of reports that might be coming through in terms of themes? And you might not be able to speak to that now, but I'm just curious about that.
I will say that, again, I sort of started a little bit at the beginning by talking about trust and relationships. And, and I really do feel that for the most part, I mean, as a, as a former middle school principal, I feel that if we can build that trust and that openness in the relationships, we want students to come directly to us and feel like they can. In terms of the trend data, I can't specifically give that to you, but I will say the fact again, that, you know, there are people that aren't aware that that's out there. And I think it might have been implemented a number of years ago. I think we do need to do a better job at making sure people know that it's there. And I'm sure that'll be part of what we do in the spring when we educate everybody.
Thank you. And trustee Collard.
Thank you. And one more question that popped into my mind. This data is based on the board as a whole. And I know that we don't see the individual schools at this level because it could identify, potentially identify students. So I'm wondering though, for schools where the numbers may be higher than other schools, will there be additional resources given to those particular schools where the rates of bullying seem to be higher so that they can address it more fulsomely?
Through you trustee Shuttleworth to trustee Collard. Great point. I do know that we're looking to align resources based on data in all areas of our, of our multi-year plan, and this would not be any different. So I can absolutely assure you that we will be allocating those resources to schools that, that are identified as having a higher instance of bullying because we do have a responsibility to, to slow this trend for sure. Thank you for the question.
Trustee Baxter.
Thank you. Through you Chair Shuttleworth to Superintendent Fowler. I'm just wondering, in the surveys that informed this data, did you ask about socioeconomic status at all of students? Thank you.
So through you trustee, through you Chair Shuttleworth to you trustee Baxter, I'm not able to answer that question right now. I do know that the, that part of these surveys, they do actually ask that information, at least the student census, but the have your say survey does not because it's anonymous. And so when we disaggregate the data, I can ask if that's something we can drill down to. It hasn't been presented to me that way yet, but I can certainly have that conversation with our research department.
Trustee Ahmed.
Through you Chair Rocha, Chair Shuttleworth. I just have one question. This survey that was done, does this include any religious minorities or visible minorities? Like the data that is compiled, how, does it, does it include those minorities, like visible minorities and specifically the religious minorities?
So through you Chair Shuttleworth to you trustee Ahmed. So the have your say survey goes out to all students in the board. And there is a response rate that we aim for, and I don't have that specifically in front of me, but I do know that the Halton District School Board's response rates tend to be quite strong and positive, in which case it would capture a variety of students from, from diverse religious and cultural backgrounds. And with regards to the student census data, again, same thing. This is shared with all students and our response rate is usually quite high. I can bring that back along with the trust, with the question from trustee Collard next week in terms of that. But we, we are a very diverse board here in the Halton District School Board. And so we are capturing data from all, all of our students.
Trustee Tseng.
Thank you. Through Chair to Superintendent, I have two questions. So the, the data, so we need, we collect a lot of data. Do we have multiple year tracing data for how, about to do the trend analysis? This is increasing or decreasing in each category. And the other question is about the, we collect all the incident, bullying incident. So how many incidents are resolved? So this is, for example, we can resolve the incident in one year or in one month. So we can, we need to put a measure for the effectiveness of the, of those mechanism we place.
Thank you. Through you Chair Shuttleworth to you trustee Zhang. So I'll answer the first question. And I believe that what we're talking about is trend data. I can tell you that yes, we do indeed have trend data and we monitor the trends. I think the biggest challenge is that the questions sometimes change. So when the questions change, so for example, next year, if I was looking at this data from the have your say survey, and we talked about this, these forms of bullying, physical, verbal, social, cyber, and sexual, next year it will have seven forms of bullying. So it can be challenging sometimes to compare data from one year to another. But I think if we look at the overall instances, we are looking at those, you know, whether you're feeling safe at school, that's just in general, right? And I think those questions are likely to remain. In terms of the second question, which I believe was related to, I'm sorry, I've lost my train of thought. Could you repeat the second question? Oh, I know, incidents of bullying, yes. So in terms of how many incidents are resolved, I really do truly believe that every incident that is brought to the attention of a principal is resolved. We can, we can be assured of that because if it isn't resolved, then it's going to come to the next level up and then the next level up until it does get resolved. So I, I want to assure you and everyone out there that anytime an incident of, of some sort, whether it's a bullying incident, whether it's an interaction that's negative in nature, we want parents to bring that forward. We want students to bring that forward because then we have the ability to address it. And so I can assure you that we do indeed address the incidents. In terms of using that as data, I will say that many things, I think really the board data and surveys at the individual school level are, are most appropriate. And so I don't know whether we, we have a tracker for individual bullying incidents across the board, just by virtue of the fact that they are handled by the schools individually. So I think that's answers, I hope that answers your questions.
All right. We have no further questions. Okay. Thank you so much for your first report.
Yes.
Well done. And thank you for all the information.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. And, and just know that this is truly important work and we really, really do look to make sure that this is highlighted, communicated, shared, so that we can build those strong, positive, trusting relationships to support students. Because if they feel safe and they want to come to school every day, then they're going to learn. So that's where we're, that's where we sit. So thank you so much for your questions and I'll do my best to get back to everybody soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, another new presenter. So next up, we have Superintendent Frekovic, who is going to speak to us about EQAO.
Okay, thank you. Through you Chair Shuttleworth to all trustees. I'm going to apologize in advance for throwing more numbers at you. Looks like the two presentations tonight are, are filled with all sorts of data. Let me just get the slides going here. There we go. And as I was saying, we're, we're throwing all kinds of data your way, but as a team, we felt in terms of EQAO results, it's important for you to see not only how we're doing, but how we're doing in relation to the rest of the province. So we'll start with some noteworthy things. First off, our board scores above provincial average in all areas. When we looked at our student questionnaires, we, we noticed the high interest indicated for reading and writing and math in the primary years. We saw a very high growth mindset in primary and junior math. And we saw high confidence in reading and math in both primary and junior. Our strong results continued in grade six reading and writing. The scores over 90% of students achieving levels three and four. And our continued area of focus in mathematics, as we see across the province, we exceeded provincial results and that continues to be an area of focus for us. Now, the results for grade three and six students. EQAO, the dashboard that is new to us this year allows us to see various layers of performance for specific groups of students. So as I share data with you, we have it presented to us and broken down by gender. Unfortunately, at the present time, EQAO only provides it for male and female. So we're hoping that next year, we have that for our gender diverse students. We have it for our multilingual language learners and we have it for our students with an IEP. And the way EQAO reports excludes those students who have an IEP and giftedness. And when we look at the data this way, it allows us to gear our professional learning opportunities appropriately. So if we look first at our grade three students and specifically in math, we see that our students perform nearly 9% better than the provincial average. And looking at our gender data, our, our students surpassed the provincial average. 70% of our males achieved a level three or four, which is 8% higher than the province. And 64% of females achieved a level three or four, which is eight and a half percent higher than provincial average. For our multilingual language learners in grade three math, we had 55% of HDSP students achieving the level three or four, and that's slightly higher than the provincial average. And our students with IEPs, 43% of this group achieved a level three or four in math, which was 14% higher than what we saw in the province. As we look at our grade three reading scores, we were once again 9% above the provincial average, with 78% of our male students achieving level three or four, 8% higher than the province, and 86% of our female students achieving three or four, which is 11% higher than what we noticed across the province. For our multilingual language learners, we had 60% of the students in HDSP performing at level three or four, which again is slightly higher than what we noticed across the province. And for our students with individualized education plans, 61% of this group achieved a level three or four in reading, which is 13% higher than what we noticed in the province. And to close it out for grade threes in writing, we were 9% above the provincial average. And looking at our gender data, 68% of our students identifying as male achieved a level three or four in writing, which is 8% higher than what we noticed across the province, and 80% of our females achieving a level three or four, which is 10% higher than the provincial average. For our multilingual language learners, we had 61% of our students in the level three and four range, which again is slightly higher than what we noticed in the province. And for our students with individualized education plans, we had 49% of this group achieving a level three or four, which is 9% higher than the provincial average. As we look at our grade six students in mathematics, we had almost 11% more students achieving at level three and four for grade six math than what we saw in the province. All HDSP students surpassed the provincial average regardless of gender. In Halton, our students who identified as male outperformed students who identified as female. And this gender discrepancy is consistent with provincial data. 62% of our males achieved a level three or four, which is 11% higher than provincial average, and 55% of females achieving a level three or four, which is also 11% higher than the provincial average. For our multilingual language learners, we had over 54% of these students achieving the provincial standard, which is 12% higher than what we saw across the province. And for our students with individualized education plans, we had over 41% achieve a level three or four in math, which is 13% higher than what we noticed throughout the province. As we look at our grade six reading scores, we had great results in this area. Had over 91% of our students achieving the provincial average. And this is six and a half percent above the provincial average. 89% of students who are male achieved a level three or four, which is 7% higher than what we saw in the province. And 94% of females achieved a level three or four, which is 6% higher than the provincial average. For our multilingual language learners, we had over 90% of these students achieve a level three, three or four in reading. And this was 12% higher than what we noticed throughout the province. And this was 12% higher than what we noticed throughout the province. And in this group, our students with individualized education plans were over 75% coming in at the level three and four in reading, and that is 12% higher than the provincial average. As we move to our grade six students in writing, once again, we had over 90% of our students achieving at level three or four. And looking at this broken down by gender, over 87% of our male students achieved a level three or four and 94% of our female students achieving a level three or four. And those are 8% and 5% respectively higher than the provincial average. For our multilingual language learners, we were over 88% achieving level three or four in writing, and this is 9% higher than the provincial average. And our students with individualized education plans had over 76% achieving a level three or four, which is almost 13% higher than what we noticed in the province. As we move to our grade nine students and we look at math for grade nine, our HDSP students performed 9% better than the provincial average with over 61% meeting the provincial standard. And for our OSS LT, EQAO breaks it down by first time eligible. And then the second piece is previously eligible. So for our first time eligible students, we had 89% of our first time eligible students achieved the provincial standard, 7% better than what we saw in the province. And for students who were previously eligible for the OSS LT, we had 93% of these students achieved the provincial standard and that is 8% better than what we noticed in the province. When we look at how we use this data in the board for students, for school and for the system, we share the individual student reports with parents. Schools also use the individualized student reports in helping their school improvement planning and really putting a focus on individual students and determining next steps for those individual students. And in the system, one of the things we look at is budget and resource allocation. And this is one piece where families, and I'll provide an example. Family school superintendents during their fall visits were reporting how schools were talking about the impact our IRTs were having throughout the system. And having, hearing from everyone that these positions were having such a positive impact. And we had many of these positions that were set to expire this month. We had Superintendent Nagoy work hard to find the funding. She was determined after hearing all of this information, worked hard to find us these funds to extend these positions to the end of the year. So we have all of the IRTs extended to the end of June and also protecting those roles. So that's how we're aligning our resources with our budget. Some of our other noteworthy pieces, although we view this as year one because it is a new assessment, we also have not had data in EQAO for three years now. We did take a look at comparisons to what we had in 2019. And in our board, we maintained or improved in all areas of EQAO in the junior years. We also maintained or improved in reading and math for our primary division students with a slight decrease in writing, which was in line with what we noticed across the province. Our decrease was 2%, whereas decrease across the province was 4%. As you know, this was the first year of an E-assessment platform. That was not without some challenges when that was being implemented. And this was also the first EQAO assessment since the new math curriculum was introduced in 2020. So one of the things we mentioned is around our continued focus on math and how we support that work. One of the ways in which we do this, when leadership teams are coming together and looking at their data and planning for their next steps, they are also reaching out to the instructional program leaders. So we have a mechanism where they can reach out for support. And to date, we've had and responded to over 130 school requests for school programs department support. We've provided over 60 learning opportunities so far this year and have mapped out a plan between now and the end of June, ranging from opportunities for our administrators during a sunrise series meeting at 7:30 in the morning to look at how to analyze their EQAO results and how to involve that in their school improvement planning, to opportunities for our LRTs, our IRTs, our new teachers and other teachers throughout the system. And we are providing release time in monitoring. So when schools are working with their leadership teams and focusing in on individual students, looking at the work that they're doing in monitoring and determining next steps for each of our students. And school programs excited about working, this work isn't just limited to school programs departments. It's across many departments. So I know all of our IPLs are excited about the work, cross-departmental work in supporting the learning and achievement work in our board. So that in a nutshell is our EQAO reporting for 2122. And we're open to any questions at this time.
Wonderful, thank you very much. And we have a couple right now. Trustee Collard.
Thank you, through you to Superintendent Frankovich. I'm always very concerned when I see the data in math, particularly knowing that for students with IEPs, the number is sadly much lower. And I know this is year one because it's a new curriculum, but the numbers continue to show that either the test is not indicative of the curriculum or that there's something in the curriculum that the students just are not able to gather. And this would be particularly so for students with IEPs. I'm also concerned that we had three years of very disruptive learning and that we are now addressing those learning gaps. You spoke to, you know, the work that's being done particularly in math. I'm wondering what is particularly being done for students with IEPs?
Through you Chair Shuttleworth, to trustee Collard. I'm sharing a tab up there which includes our elementary math plan. And this is for all students, including our students with IEPs. So we also have this plan for literacy. And I'll just take you through the math one so you can see some of the things. And I apologize, that font is quite small. I didn't plan on sharing this tab, it wasn't part of it, but I did have it handy. So our math plan that we've been sharing at family schools meetings and during our sunrise series starts with knowing your learner, right? So not only students on IEPs, every student that we're, you know, we're shining the light on. We talk about our responsive learning environments. So as Superintendent Fowler mentioned, CRRP in our classroom. We talk about the pedagogical content knowledge that's necessary for our students. We look at planning not only long range, but the daily planning. And from that, we move on to our assessment and evaluation. We look at our instructional practices and looking at our best practices across the system. And then how we support that, again, through differentiated and responsive instruction, but also our resource selection. So all of this is highlighted during all of those learning sessions. I told you about 60 that we've run so far this year with an added piece around family and community engagement. And also with Superintendent Flahout and what we're doing around partnering with our community partners, also learning outside the school day. And then after that, we look at our school teams finally having the opportunity to come together, not virtually, to sit around a table and looking at data, planning how we're going to respond to individual student need, looking at that collaborative learning culture. And then, as I mentioned earlier, a big piece for us is that monitoring and looking at where a student presently is. And a great example would be in line with your question around our students with IEPs and what needs to be done as a next step.
Thank you for that response. I just wanted to add on that I actually believe every student should have an IEP because no two students are alike. Every student has areas of strength and areas of need. And I know that that would be a lot of paperwork, but I also know that it would benefit our students. And I also know that that's beyond our capability to bring that into action as a school board. But I thought I'd mention it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Rocha.
Through you Chair to Superintendent Frankovich. They're great results. We're doing better than the rest of the province, so that's great to hear. I guess I have two questions. Are we looking to see what those that are doing better? Sorry, let me rephrase that. For those boards that have better scores than we do, are we reaching out to them to see what their best practices are? To see if we can implement some of their best practices at our board? And then the other question is more of a provincially, because these are provincial results. Is there any provincial organization that's looking at the scores and perhaps recommending best practices so that overall, all of Ontario's scores can improve? Or is it just up to each individual board to figure it out and improve their scores?
Through Chair Shuttleworth to Vice Chair Rocha. The first one, we do have regional superintendents and we've been connecting our staffs to meet together, to look at some of the work we're doing. And one of the pieces that comes up often in the fall is how we're responding to the Right to Read report. And then the second piece that seems to be extremely popular right now is how we're responding to our math scores. And so for us, that's sharing the plan I just shared with you up there, but we have been connecting. So we've been reaching out and we've had other school boards reach out to us. And we've been connecting our IPLs and our system principals with those to have that conversation. And that second piece, there has been a lot of talk out there. You'll see, I know one of the partners that many of our families reach out to, Oxford Learning, I know published something about scores and that, you know, it could be a bit alarming and they obviously focused on the math scores. So that is out there. So I guess to sum it up in your question, we're working as a team. So we are working at times in isolation as a board, but there are several opportunities where we are partnering with neighboring boards. And those boards that aren't really our neighbors but have been reaching out as well.
And if I may, just add, trustee Rocha, through Chair Shuttleworth, I don't believe there is a public board in Ontario that's doing better than we are. And as Superintendent Frankovich said, we have done just as well or even better than we've ever done. And so we are on the right track and we continue to look at ways to improve. As you've noted, trustee Collard, grade six math is always a problem, historically and perpetually has been. And we know, to your point, we ask the same question about whether or not this is something that is fundamentally and foundationally inherently wrong with the assessment itself. But as I said, it's a new curriculum. It's been four school years of a pandemic. And we're extremely proud of our students and what they have done. And we continue to work towards getting better each and every year. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. When I was listening to your report tonight, Superintendent Frankovich, I coined the phrase H squared, higher in Halton. And everything you talk about, we're higher than the province, higher than... And to a lot, like a significantly higher percentage. And so my question is this. You referred to Superintendent of Business Nagoy's support and being able to find the funding for the resource teachers to carry on this year. Would you say that there's a direct correlation with this additional staff support to our results in the board? Thank you.
Through you Chair Shuttleworth, to trustee Gray. The IRTs are new this year, so we would expect to see the impact in subsequent assessments. But what all of my colleagues have been saying when they've been visiting schools and having those conversations was overwhelming in terms of the impact our IRTs and LRTs are having in terms of learning recovery and renewal in our schools. So once again, a shout out to Superintendent Nagoy for finding those funds and doing such a nice job protecting that.
Just a follow-up comment. That's particularly important for the Board of Trustees to hear, especially when it comes around to budget time and staffing. So thank you for those comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through you Chair to Superintendent Frankovich. Maybe this is more of a comment than a question, but on the topic of math, I'm a firm supporter of math specialists teaching math and that includes at the elementary level. And so I'm wondering where we sit with hiring math specialists in the elementary panel and whether perhaps that's something that the province should be considering, you know, as a way to boost our math scores, right? Teach math maybe a little bit better and have the improvements visible in our society. Thank you.
Through you Chair Shuttleworth, to trustee Oliver. Our goal is to make all teachers math specialists. And I'm just going to go back to trustee Gray's comment about our scores being high. We don't spend a lot of time celebrating that. We look at the work that needs to be done. And I just flashed another document that we use internally in our department for our next steps in EQAO. And this is in line with what I shared around providing over 60 learning opportunities so far this year. And then this is a document that we use to map out our learning opportunities specifically related to EQAO between now and the end of the year. So we break it down by month. We also include some of the things that will be a focus for those meetings. Once again, you'll see the math plan embedded everywhere because that's such an important piece to continue to look at and looking at those high-yield math strategies to support our learning around EQAO and how to move each individual student.
If I may ask Associate Director Samini to add.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to add too, we do make big investments using some of our funding in subsidizing additional qualifications in mathematics for our teachers. And that's been a big part of our math plan. And just to some of the earlier comments, our kudos to the program department. The folks there have worked really hard to create recognized math and literacy plans. We get many calls from other boards asking for us to share. And so I think that is the way that we build capacity across the system. It's very organized, it's very methodological. All the different pieces of the program implementation wheel are considered. And I think that's why we have the good results that we have in investing in our teachers. To your question, trustee Oliver is a big piece of that, whether it's in-house PD, but also some of the AQs that we subsidize.
Thank you, I have a question. So for me, EQAO is but a small piece to show the success of our school board. So what I'm wondering is, and you kind of hinted at it, and I think it's really great, but I'm just trying to think about how are we allowing... Because I sometimes think there's so much focus on EQAOs, we forget, as you somewhat pointed out, to the greater success of our teaching opportunities of improving math and literacy within the classroom, within a more realistic setting. So what my question is, is how are we, as you said, celebrating those EQAO scores alongside the methods that get us to where we are? Which really, I think, is sometimes a focus that is forgotten. If you understand my question, I don't know how clear it is.
To you, trustee, to you Chair Shuttleworth. If I understand the question and comment correctly, the celebration piece, while we look at that and we are proud of our achievements, one of the things that your comment reminds me of is when you see our principals sitting around the table looking at their individual student data. So not the big picture that we're sharing, looking at how Margot... looking at how Margot is performing in math? And what are the next steps for Margot?
I'm doing really well.
But that helps. So the EQAO data, although it's not everything, it does provide for some focused conversation around the table now that we have all of our school leadership teams back meeting in person with student data right on the table in front of them as they determine the next steps.
Great, thank you so much. Seeing no more questions, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now up to item three, which is our consent agenda. For approval, we have the school board minutes from December the 7th. And for information, we have both the order paper and the policy and governance procedure review schedule, report number 22158. So I'm going to put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the consent agenda and receive the information items for December 14th, 2022. Trustee Daniele, would you like to make a motion to deal with the consent agenda?
Thank you, yes, I would.
And Trustee Collard, would you like to second that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion this evening? Seeing none, are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? And again, seeing none, the consent agenda is therefore approved by unanimous consent. Thank you very much. Which brings us up to item 4.0, ratification and action items for this evening. Item 4.1 is for business transaction transacted in private session. Vice Chair Rocha, do we have any business from private session that requires approval?
Yes, we do. We have three items.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
First item. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve matters from private session respecting personal information, report 22163.
Thank you. And Trustee Baxter, would you like to second that motion, please?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Is there anything more?
Yes. Next, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees accept and approve the goals for the director's performance review for the 2022-23 school year.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Collard, would you like to second that, please?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. And one more?
Last one. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the memorandum of settlement which was reached with the QP local on December 7th, 2022.
And Trustee Gray, would you like to second that?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Wonderful. Are there any objectives to passing the motions from private session? Okay. It seems to be here. So I'm going to set the vote, please, if you can cast your votes.
Yes, from Trustee Daniele.
Thank you, Trustee Daniele. Trustee Ahmed?
Yes, from me.
Wonderful, thank you so much. And that passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
Just a point of order. We don't normally pass each or all of the motions as a whole. We usually do them one at a time. And I understand what you were going for there. But I don't know if we're allowed to do it that way.
Well, we aren't because the second one's up there. So that first one we just voted on was for Trustee Baxter's seconded motion for personal matters. Personal information. Second one, which is now, I'm so sorry about that, is to approve the goals for the director's performance review. And there we go.
Yes, from Trustee Daniele.
Thank you so much, Trustee Daniele. And Trustee Ahmed?
Yes, from Trustee Ahmed.
Thank you. Trustee Tseng?
Yes. So this is for approval? Yes.
Yeah, so can you?
Oh, I vote. Yeah.
Wonderful, again, thank you very much. And that passes unanimously. And we're up to number three, which is regarding the approving the memorandum of settlement which was reached with the QP local on December the 7th.
Yes, from Trustee Daniele.
Thank you, Trustee Daniele. Trustee Ahmed?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. And again, that passes unanimously. All right, and that brings us to a close for private session. We have no action items for December the 14th. But that, oh, sorry, action items for December the 14th, we do. So the first one is request for accumulated surplus use at JW Singleton Education Centre, report number 22159. Superintendent Gadett, I will put the motion on the floor and then allow you some time to speak to it. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board authorize the use of $990,000 from accumulated surplus to support required capital upgrades at the JW Singleton Education Centre. Trustee Baxter, would you like to move that motion?
Yes, please.
And Trustee Ahmed, would you like to second that motion?
Yes, I second that.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Gadett?
Thank you and good evening. As you indicated, we are seeking approval to spend some capital money on the JWS Centre. Specifically, we're looking to renew our roof. I didn't provide a detailed breakdown of costs because we are experiencing a volatile market. But budgetary pricing would put our roof in around $450,000. We anticipate doing some site work to re-ashvold some of the parking areas. That's estimated at about $150,000. And then we are also looking to do some upgrades to security of the facility as well as repurpose some meeting rooms that were lost. And also upgrade our staff kitchen as well as pilot some new furniture and hoteling and hot desking options that we might like to employ in a future education centre should we be approved to embark on that project. Studies are underway, continuing to look at how we can envision that project. Originally, before my time, we looked to purchase a site and the timing didn't quite line up with approvals. We also did explore co-building on one of our current capital priority projects. Part of the fear of that was that it would slow it down further and complicate an already convoluted process, in particular for our northeast secondary school. And so we are exploring the options of trying to maintain a use of the site just south of this property here on the joint campus between JWS and the MMR site. So we're looking at studies as to how we can advance that. But in the meanwhile, we do need to invest in this facility because we will be here for a number of years still as we look to gain approvals to look to re-envision bringing all the staff together from New Street and JWS in a future education centre. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Trustee Amos?
Thank you. Thank you for this. The JWS has much needed lots of upgrades. And I was going to ask about what future plans, but I'm glad to hear that you are still exploring. And while I know you don't want to slow the high school down, I still think that would be a great location if you could piggyback onto it because it would be much more central for a lot of people. So anyways, I fully support upgrading because people can't work in a location that is difficult and falling apart around them. But I'm glad to see that we're still exploring other options to bring all staff under one location that would be more conducive to helping support students. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Gray.
Yes, through the chair, just wondered if you could comment on overall the AODA compliance of this building? Is that a bad question?
That's a difficult question. I will see, we barely meet any AODA compliance. As the co-chair for the Accessibility Committee, we're currently meeting virtual. We are talking about meeting in person. And there has been a suggestion that we hold it here. And I think we could possibly pull it off. But, you know, it's certainly not the most conducive. The, they're, one of the issues that we identified in some of the needs, for example, is if we do have new staff, say that joined my department in Facility Services, we're up on the second floor. If they were in a wheelchair, for example, they would never be able to come up to our department. There are alternative plans that we could make that work, but certainly they're not ideal. So in terms of where we're at in compliance, we will not meet the 2025 guidelines for accessibility for this facility.
A follow up, please. What are the consequences of not being able to meet those guidelines?
Thanks for the question, through the chair to trustees. At this point, you know, I'll say we've been doing our best across the province to meet those guidelines. It's been challenging given funding restrictions. And while we continue to make advancements in our system, some of the advancements are reactive to individual needs. And certainly, we want to be more proactive as we navigate. We've adjusted our capital renewal plan to try and be more responsive to the needs of our students in our system. But certainly, there are schools built of a certain age that are particularly challenging, and this facility is similar to that. If you've navigated the staircases, for example, they're problematic for able-bodied people to navigate, get out of the door swing and not fall down the stairs. So, you know, it's a difficult question. I don't know that there's going to be penalties if we do not achieve that. But certainly, we do want to do the best we can to support those in our community that have those needs.
Thank you. And my question kind of falls up from Trustee Gray. So AODA was something that I was concerned about with this building. But I do also know, and I think I have it right this time, I'm struggling with this acronym. But there's the FCI number for each of our buildings. Facility Condition Index, is that right? I got it. So I'm just kind of wondering, with this building, like, I'm pretty sure that that is pretty high. So when you say we're looking at other alternatives and looking at what we're going to do in the future, I'm just really wondering how much focus is on that. So again, you spoke to the fact that about, I guess that was three or four, I can't remember time, just as we had looked at opportunities of moving to somewhere else where it was a building that would have been AODA compliant, everybody under one roof, that kind of went to the wayside. And since then, we haven't heard a lot of talk about that. So my question really is, is how much of an importance is that, particularly with looking at this building with an FCI number, which I'm pretty sure is higher than it should be to be throwing good money into it?
Thanks for the question. I'll start with the FCI data. This building is the highest facility condition index in our board for, you know, all our schools and admin sites. It's, I believe, I forget if it's 60% or above 60%, but once you start to get to 65%, that's a bit of a threshold. And the ministry used to fund schools for consideration for reconstruction that were well above 65% under a prohibitive to repair funding grant. That's been gone for a while. But that's where this facility falls into. And that's why we're exploring a rebuild option because it is prohibitive to repair. It'd be quite costly to achieve all the amenities that we would like to see in a new build while bringing all the staff under one roof.
Thank you. And although I do support this motion and the money going toward, because as I think Trustee Amos said, we can't have staff working in unworkable conditions. I do hope that the board is looking at trying to think of a way not to be throwing good money into projects that might not necessarily deserve it. But thank you very much. Seeing no other questions. If everybody could please cast a vote. Thank you very much.
That's yes from Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. Trustee Ahmed?
Say yes word, please.
Thank you so much. And that passes unanimously. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you, Superintendent Gadett, for your report. Okay, we are now up to item 4.2.2, revised budget for the 2022-2023 year, report number 22160, presented by Superintendent Nagoy. I'll read the motion and then have her chat to us about it. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the 2022-2023 Halton District School Board revised PSAB operating budget in the amount of $864,517,31. And that the Superintendent of Business Services and Treasurer be authorized to proceed with the expenditure of funds as outlined in Appendix D. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the 2022-2023 in-year deficit elimination plan in the amount of $7,512,274. And that the Superintendent of Business Services and Treasurer be authorized to action the plan as outlined in Appendix G. Trustee Ahmed, would you like to move this motion?
I move that motion, please.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Tseng, would you like to second that?
I second, thank you.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Nagoy, the floor is yours.
Thank you and good evening, trustees. Myself and General Manager Chantavong would like to walk you through a few slides as we present the revised estimates budget report. Just as a little bit of background, the revised budget is usually an information item as long as it is within the same budget that has been approved the previous June. This evening, we do have a slightly higher budget to request. So therefore, this is an action items on behalf of the trustees. I'm having some technical difficulties playing the slide. It does move on my computer, but it doesn't seem to be moving online. So I will just use it this way, if you don't mind. So just in terms of what we'll be covering today, I just wanted to provide you a quick overview of the reporting cycles that you'll be getting familiar with as we navigate for the year. The key components that make up our budget, looking at some of the numbers and changes from budget to revised budget and the overall financial position towards the end. So in terms of the budget cycles, there's three main reporting cycles to the ministry that we are required to comply with. The budget estimates is the beginning of our reporting cycles. And it's usually developed the year before that it's based on. And it has to be approved by the Board of Trustees three months before the beginning of the fiscal year. At this point in the reporting cycle, the projections are based on enrollment. So the enrollment is projected for both count dates that we take into account in terms of arriving to the average daily enrollment. So there's projected October 31st enrollment and March 31st enrollment at this point. And we build all the assumptions and the information that we have up to June of that year. Revised budget, which is what this presentation focuses on in terms of the numbers that you'll see throughout the rest of the presentation, is based on actual October enrollment and projected March. And then three months after the end of the year, we are reporting on audit of financial statements. These go to the Audit Committee first and then come to the Board for approval. And they have to be approved and sent to the ministry by November 15th of the year. they have to be approved and sent to the ministry by November 15th of the year. So, in any given year, we will be working on three fiscal years, which is going to be a little confusing as we refer to the prior year of financial statements, the current year for revised budget, and at the last meeting, we've talked to you about starting the process for budget development for next year. So, the key components for the budget are enrollment, revenue, and expenses, so most of our funding is based on enrollment and changes in enrollment, in addition to other factors that are socioeconomic, demographic factors that are also built, the condition of the facilities, for example, the square footage of our buildings, and so forth. So, in terms of enrollment, as I mentioned before, we do look at the average daily enrollment for the year, which is a calculation of the average between the two main count dates, October 31 and March 31, and also looking in terms of the minutes of instruction for students, so there are part-time and full-time students, so we're looking at the full-time equivalency of a student. Enrollment projections are also based on a number of factors, which include birth rates, the immigration and migration for our region, or in and out of our region, looking at housing statistics and the future developments, as well as looking at the yields between our Board and our Ceterminus Board or French language boards. Program offerings and retention rates are also key factors when we determine where we see the growth or the decline in enrollment in the future. The revenue, we are mostly funded by the Ministry of Education, so under the provincial government, so we receive about 89.2% of our funding through the Grants for Student Needs, which make up the most of our funding, and one-time focused funds that are called Priorities and Partnership Funds, so you'll hear us talk about PPFs quite a bit. So, Priorities and Partnership Funds are timed investments in particular areas that we have to spend in a certain way in which they were intended. Other revenues include amortization of the foreign capital contributions, which comes in to offset the amortization of our assets, which is a non-cash expense. We have tuition fees, rental of our facilities, investment income, and other government funding, whether it's from other ministries or from the federal government. School-generated funds make up about 2.2% of our funding, and that, of course, will fluctuate, we've seen it over 3% in years pre-pandemic, and we're currently estimating a return to that level, gradual return to that level. And then, we do have capital funding that is intended to be spent only on capital projects, so that includes capital priorities, which is based on business cases to the ministry and is the main funding for building new schools or additions to existing schools. School renewal and school condition improvement grants allow us to make improvements and maintain our schools, our existing schools, and proceeds of disposition are also able to be used towards improving our schools, and they are based on proceeds of sales of properties or other land transactions. In terms of expenses, as I've mentioned in earlier reports, we are mostly a service organization, so we have about 80% of our budget is salaries and benefits, and 20% is non-salary. This is based on ministry categories, and that's how we report, so the categories that we are listing in these slides are based on that reporting requirement. So, in terms of instruction, which can include salary, benefits, and other expenses, we spend 77.3% directly in the classroom, so expenses that are linked directly to the classroom and the school administration, as well as other resources that support classroom and learning and the libraries. We spend 2.2% on administration expenses, which includes all the corporate staff and central staff, such as finance, payroll, HR, communications, research, IT, facilities, management, et cetera. Transportation is an indirect cost to instruction, and that's 2.4%, and pupil accommodation refers to maintenance and upkeep of schools, as well as the temporary accommodations, so the portables that we need to accommodate growth in some of our communities, and any amortization of our assets and debt financing. And then, 4% refer to other expenses, which are mostly related to the Priorities and Partnership Fund expenses, other recoverable secondments that we have for some of our staff, provision for contingencies, and school-generated funds. So, when we look at this current year, we do have some challenges and some highlights that we wanted to mention. We have seen significant pressure on our supply costs. Although vacancy fills remain lower than what we would normally see, we do have a higher cost in terms of a supply need, both occasional or casual and long-term supply. So, that has significantly increased year over year. We're also watching closely the results of the labor negotiations, both at the central table as well as the local table, and trying to capture the effects of those within the budget. They are funded, some of them are funded for formula, for example, so it's not going to be 100% one-for-one, but we don't expect there to be a significant difference between the costs and the terms that have been agreed upon centrally. We have also seen significant cost escalation and supply chain issues, delays in receiving our orders, that is both in terms of the supplies that we use within the classroom, but also on our projects, on our maintenance and capital projects. On the positive side, we've seen significant timed investments to learning recovery, mental health and well-being, special education, ventilation. The concern there is that they are one-time, and we are not sure whether or not they will continue into the future. So, within the budget, we do take them into account and heavily rely on these one-time And we continue to see some negative impact on some of our revenue, such as the international students enrollment, and the rental revenue is not tracking to the level that we have So, I'll pass it on to Jay to walk you through some of the key numbers in the next few slides.
All right, good evening, trustees. Thanks for having me. Happy to be here to walk you through the revised estimates budget figures, because numbers are my thing, so I'm very excited about numbers, so happy to be here. So, just to dive right into the numbers, we start with enrollment. So, our revised estimates projected enrollment, as you see here on the slide, is 67,032 ADE. So, we compared it two ways. Once, firstly, to our budget estimates from June, which we're realizing nearly 300 ADE increase, or 0.45%, with the growth being realized at the elementary panel for 360 ADE and a slight decrease in secondary of 60 ADE. And then, the second half of this table is comparing to last year's actual enrollment, where it's a growth of 902 ADE, or 1.36%, with growth realized in both panels. So, where this translates is into our revenue on the next slide. So, the first one here is a pie chart of our revenue of 903 million, with the biggest slice being the dark blue, which is our provincial grant, GSN, of 88%. So, as you can see, enrollment drives the largest slice of this pie of our revenue. So, moving on to the next slide is the table to show the revenue sources with the dollar figures. So, in this table, we are comparing the revised budget numbers by revenue source to the estimates budget from June, and showing an increase overall of $36 million. The largest increase for revenue is in our GSN. The two big components there are 24.5 million in land or property transaction, which is directly transferred to our accumulated surplus closer to the bottom here, so it's our surplus for land, leaving about 4.3 million for our increase in GSN, driven mainly by enrollment, as mentioned on the previous slide. The other few areas that we have increased revenue are provincial grants others, so Roxanna mentioned the PPFs, so we have 2.8 million more since our budget estimates, and the majority of this is rolled forward from the prior year, specifically the tutoring PPF that we had left over, we are allowed to carry forward to this year, and we use it accordingly. The other large increase in revenues and investment income for two main reasons, the escalating interest rates since budget estimates back in the spring, as well, our cash flow, we've updated it, and it's, we're in a better position due to delayed land purchases, so we have more cash to invest during that time. And then, the last one to touch on is the other fees and revenues of 3 million. The largest component there is our expected increase in education development charges of about 4 million. So, as mentioned, the overall increase in revenue from estimates is 36 million, with 26 of that being transferred directly to our surplus, so leaving 10 million as a net increase. So, then moving on to the expenses, this pie chart is capturing our operating expenses of $865 million. So, as Roxanna mentioned earlier, the instruction area is the largest at 77%, so the dark blue slice there. So, on the next slide is a table breaking down the same pie slices in $2 and comparing it to the estimates budget. So, it's an overall increase of 10 million, which matches to our revenue increase. The largest areas of change are in instruction, 5.2 million, mainly due to increasing staffing levels to support our increased enrollment and student needs, as well as some roll-forward budgets from the prior year, whether they're enveloped or through reserves, so that's captured in this 5.2 million. The administration area is an increase of 1.2 million. The large majority of it is the JWS renovations that were just approved on the previous action item, so we got that in as soon as possible here, as well as some administrative costs, such as legal and IT resources. Another large area or increase is in pupil combination, where we brought our temporary accommodation budget up to the appropriate level based on needs, so for our portables at our school sites. And lastly, in the other, that essentially is our increase in PPFs that were rolled forward. On the revenue side, it's capturing here on the expense side, and an additional note to that is that we did top up the tutoring PPF with our own money to extend staff to the end of June for our students. So, in summary, it's a $10 million increase to our expense budget. If you have to take any questions, before passing it back to Roxanna over our financial position.
Anybody have any questions? I have one. So, I just, with the tutoring one, I was, there was a over, we had extra leftover from tutoring at the end, but then we topped it up, so why would we top it up if we had extra leftover? That didn't 100% make sense to me.
It's a good question, so through Chair, I'll work to yourself. We have an expiry date on the tutoring funds that were rolled forward of March 31st, so that leaves April to June unfunded, so that's where we used our own funds to top up the resources required.
Okay, I don't think there's any more questions from you, so back to you, Roxanna.
All right, and I'm not sure why I cannot present as a slideshow, but I'll try to make it larger. So, in terms of our financial position, what does this mean? We have compliance and out-of-compliance, and for any accountant in the room, this is a very difficult table to look at, because it's one of those that sort of starts in the middle and builds up and down. So, we are looking at the first half of this table, which is the part for compliance, think of it as the operating money that we have to deal with, and this is the in-year change. So, we are looking at an appropriated, which means it hasn't been allocated to anything specific, an unappropriated deficit of 5.8 million, and then we have some appropriated or internally appointed by trustees in terms of various categories, so we're going to be looking at spending 1.8 million from the category of student achievement and MYP. We have various roll-forwards for some system implementation, as well as the decentralized budgets, so roll-forwards from the prior year that we expect to spend in this year, and committed capital that is unsupported ministry funding, that make up a total accumulated in-year accumulated deficit for compliance of 7.5 million. So, that compares to what was approved in the budget of 7.2, so we are about 300,000 over the approved amount in the budget, and hence, we have a motion in front of trustees to consider approving the revised budget. The reason we have increased the ask is, as we mentioned before, we've seen some challenges in terms of the supply costs, we have added some additional educational assistant positions, so we have used a portion of, we had used half of our contingency at that point, and this 300,000 helps us top it back up to 800,000 remaining. Below that gray line in the middle is the accumulated surplus that is unavailable for compliance, that is regulated from external parties, such as either it's through accounting standards restricted or the ministry, and that includes some committed capital, sinking fund, interest earned, and the biggest amount is revenues recognized for land, which are education development charges, as well as when we have any changes in land transactions, so if we add to our asset, it gets reflected through there. So, you see again that $26 million going through the revenue recognized for land. Just waiting for the next slide to pop up here. An apologies for how small this looks, I think we're going to focus on the top part. So, on this slide, we wanted to provide you with the opening balance and closing balance, so opening balance to the right, and the closing So opening balance to the right and the closing balance to the left. And you can see in the middle, the change of 7.5 million is the in-year use of accumulated surplus. So starting with the accumulated surplus available for compliance of 55.6 million and ending with 53.9 million. And that is the internally appropriated plus we have the non-designated surplus at the top of 8.5 million. So that is about 62 million in total accumulated surplus for compliance. And then below we have the accumulated surplus that is unavailable for compliance that relates to committed capital projects and the land transactions. That just gives you a bit of an idea as to why, as trustees know, we are, we have a deficit budget on purpose in order to support the multi-year plan. And we also make use of this accumulated surplus as needed. So my last slide here, and this is also part of your motion to approve, as with the budget estimates, trustees are also required to approve deficit elimination plan if we do present a deficit budget, even if it is a compliant budget. And the use of surplus has to be on one-time type of initiative. So something that we could stop within two years. Otherwise, it's considered a structural deficit. We do not have a structural deficit. So all of the things that make up the 7.5 million are temporary in nature and they can be eliminated within one or two years. I also wanted to mention that we have, the 7.5 million represents 0.99%. So we've, we've gone all the way within about 50,000 or so of our compliance calculation. So it's the highest that we've, we've been in a while and it's a little bit concerning. It does provide for a contingency of 800,000 that hasn't been allocated to any expenses that can help accommodate emergencies through the year. And we're going to be very closely monitoring through interim reporting, the quarterly reports that you receive, that trends to see how we fare against budget, against the revised budget and whether we expect to be above or below that. So we'll be keeping you appraised, but so far we've made use of the entire room within compliance. In your package, in the actual report, we have notes to the appendices. So that actually explains what's included, what's, you know, temporary staff and what is included in the new initiatives and so forth. So there's more details in your report as well. And Jay and I would be happy to take any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Seeing no questions, I have two. So first of all, the 7.5% million deficit. So I know that there is a percentage number that's the magic number. What percentage of our budget is 7.5 million?
So the 7.5 million represents 0.99, so just under 1% of our, what is called the provincial allocation, so our operating budget. The provincial allocation is a, is a calculation of the grants for student needs less anything that is in capital in nature. So that's how the percentage for compliance is determined. Our budget that is for approval to trustees today is for 864 million. So that will be less than 1%. But in terms of compliance, we look at the GSN and it's adjusted for capital components and that's our provincial allocation.
Okay. And then my other question is on in appendix B, when we look at projected revenues, there are two that have decreases. And I'm just wondering if that's coming down from like grants or something. So there's a decrease in special education grants of 382,000 and a decrease in indigenous education of 84,000. So I'm just wondering, like those seem like quite high numbers for decreases in funding. So I'm just wondering where, why there's such large decreases in those two revenues.
All right. So I can address that. So for special education, the main driver to that is their special incidents claims amount. It is lower than the prior few years. So that pretty much makes up the decrease for special education, for that allocation. The second one for, I believe it's indigenous education. So the amount of student credits that we estimated back in June was higher than what we're realizing here at revised estimates. So, so we lose grant revenue because there's less students taking the indigenous education course.
Okay. Thank you very much. Seeing no more speakers, thank you very much for your presentation and I will open it up for voting, please. Thank you very much.
Yes from trustee Daniele.
Thank you, trustee Daniele. Trustee Ahmed.
Let's say yes word, please.
Thank you so much. Wonderful. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. All right. It did. Okay. I'm sorry. It passed, but not unanimously. There was one vote in dissent, which was trustee Diadadi. Thank you very much. We're going to take a five-minute recess because it's been a while. So we'll come back at 25 after nine. Thank you very much, everybody. Okay. We are up to item 4.2.3, which is the DPRC for the 2021-2022 Process and Director's Goals for the 2022-2023 Year, report number 22164. I'm going to pass the gavel to Vice Chair Al Harrison because I am Vice Chair Rocha. Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry.
I've been with her all day.
All day. It's been a long day. So I'll pass it to you.
Okay.
So just read the motion. So to make everyone aware, this motion is somewhat redundant because we've already passed it in private session, but we are reading it just for public awareness.
All right. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees accept and approve the goals for the Director's Performance Review for the 2022-23 School Year.
Right. So as mentioned, this motion has already been passed in private session. However, we wanted to draw the public's attention to the fact that there is a Director's Performance Goals that are attached to the agenda for this evening. Director Ennis set himself goals in collaboration with the trustees for the upcoming year and they all show direct links to the multi-year plan. And we look forward to our journey through this next year together and we are happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Seeing no questions, we're going to move on to the next agenda item and with that I will pass the gavel back.
Thank you very much. That brings us up to item 4.2.1, Forming a Governance Policy and Procedure Review Standing Committee, Report Number 22161. Trustee Amos is going to speak to this, but I'm going to start by reading the motion. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees approve the formation of the Non-Statutory Standing Committee and adopt the term of references as included in Appendix A of Report 22161. And be it further resolved that all references to the Governance Standing Committee in the Governance Procedures and Policy be amended to reflect these changes. Trustee Amos, would you like to move this motion? Trustee Baxter, would you like to second that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Amos, I pass the floor over to you.
Thank you. As we all know, last week we had a discussion and that's where this motion came from. And so back in June at a committee of the whole meeting, we had Jillian Tuck-Katarnia from Miller Thompson come. And there had been some concerns about the name of the Governance Standing Committee at that time. It had nothing to do with the actual committee or the work of the committee, which was great. They all did a phenomenal job, but it was about the actual name and the, the terms of reference. And so I sent all trustees the link so that they could watch the, what her statements were. But basically governance is the purview of all trustees and just wanted to make it clear that this committee is, while it is the governance committee, it's the Governance Policy and Procedure Review Committee and therefore be for reviewing and revising governance policy and procedures as needed and identifying gaps for the rest of us so that they can, new policy and procedures or updated ones can be created. So anyways, it's here for your consideration. Thank you.
All right. I see some questions already on the floor. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. I've looked through this report and the report that follows it, which is the one that I put forward at the same time as trustee Amos. And I'm trying to find some common ground between the two. I think there is some common ground, and so I would like to suggest that there be a meeting of the minds and that perhaps in place of the motions in both of the reports, that instead, we have the following motions. Be it resolved that the Governance Standing Committee be renamed the Governance Document Review Standing Committee, that all references to the Governance Standing Committee in the Committees and Appointments' Governance Procedure be changed to reflect the new name, and that this committee be reinstated for 2023. Be it resolved that the Board Self-Assessment Standing Committee be reinstated for 2023. Be it resolved that the Trustees' Professional Development Planning Standing Committee be reinstated for 2023. And be it resolved that the Governance Standing Committee, which is now the Governance Document Review Standing Committee, schedule a review of the Committees and Appointments' Governance Procedure to commence immediately upon completion of the review of the Code of Conduct Policy and Governance Procedure as outlined in the body of Report 22165. And the reason that I'm bringing this forward is because I recognize that the name Governance Standing Committee may have caused some confusion for some trustees. And so, I am open to renaming that committee. But I think that when it comes to things like terms of reference, that this is something that should happen in an organic fashion, where all trustees' voices are heard around the table, and not just as one trustee's thoughts on what a terms of reference should say. I also think that we should probably review them for all three of the standing committees and not just for one. As well, I think that it's important for us to look at the governance procedure as it pertains to standing committees and their working groups. So I would like to see a more fulsome review and not just the change to one line of one terms of reference. And I'm hoping that this will be amenable to trustee Amos and the secondor trustee Baxter.
I believe there's, sorry, already a motion on the table.
So did you want to respond to trustee Collard's suggestions?
I appreciate your coming, trying to come to a meeting of the minds, and I know important the trustee code of conduct is because you and I were actually the ones who created the first trustee code of conduct, and I know how much work it took for the two of us to do it. My concerns are the terms of reference still has not been looked at, and there is a bit of a, I'm fine with the name. And as I said, when I shared this, it was open to anyone to provide feedback. I just have some concerns still about the terms of reference. So I'm not sure at this point what to say.
May I, may I respond? Yes, I would like to see all 11 trustees participate in building the terms of reference and not just for one of the standing committees, but for all three. Because the terms of reference may change from time to time as we learn and grow and move forward. When, when the Self-Assessment Standing Committee was formed, we had never had one before, so the terms of reference may not be actually up to date. The same with the Trustees' Professional Development Planning Standing Committee, which was a standing committee that I put forward the motion to create. Those were brand-new standing committees that had never existed before, and I think it would be wise to look at all three of them, not just at one. And I think that we can wait two or three months to get this right instead of pushing forward. And as our, as our colleague trustee Gray said last week, sometimes you have to go slow to go fast. And so I'm saying, let's go slow. I don't mind changing the name of the committee, but changing the terms of reference without proper due diligence and without the input of all trustees in, in an informed way, especially our four newer trustees who have not had the opportunity yet to experience a standing committee, I think is going way too fast, and I would prefer to go a slower route.
I'm in total agreement with all, all of them being reviewed. My concern is creating a, any standing committee then, and then without having a deadline and with the terms of reference not being changed. So if we were to proceed forward and to review things after the trustee code of conduct, I would say that the committees at that point should then only be in place until that point, and then would be recreated again for the specific purpose of looking at the terms of reference and for all committees.
Thank you. And so I just, one point for me for clarification. So where trustee Amos is asking for a different term of reference, either terms of reference, and I'm just going to check with manager Carrillo, would be considered new because it's a new, or it's a re-revision of a, of a board or a committee? But for the exist, for the trustees that are new to the table, both terms of references would be equally new? So that's just where I'm, I'm struggling with, because although they exist for us as trustees who have been around, for all new trustees, the existing terms of reference are new. New terms of references are new. So I have a difficult time with that as being seen as something, as a difference. So that's just, I wanted to check that for my own head. Am I correct?
Is there a question?
There's a question for you.
The terms of reference for the previous Governance Standing Committee did expire November 14. So at this point, the proposal in Report 22165 is to reinstate the previous terms of reference, which for having been expired effectively are new on the floor again. And the revisions in Report 22161 are also new.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you very much, and I'm going to attempt to make sense. I'm afraid I'm not feeling my best, so please bear with me. I'm looking for clarification on trustee Collard's motion. I know that last year, we did, when we spoke with lawyer Jillian Takatana, it was because we were confused as to what came under governance and what did not. For instance, I will look to the naming committee. The naming committee met all summer and did all their work, but when the report came, it came from the Governance Committee because it was considered a product of the Governance Committee. As someone who sits on both the Self-Assessment and the Professional Development, I'd like to know going forward that those committees don't come under the Governance Committee, that they are their own committees. Because I think the waters got very, very muddied last year, and it felt like one committee was in charge of all the other committees from several trustees around the board. I remember speaking with a number one of my colleagues. So that's what I'm trying to avoid, and I want to make sure that the motion, the substantive motion that has been put forward reflects that and is understanding of that. Otherwise, I would be supporting trustee Amos's original motion. So I'm wondering if through you, Madam Chair, to trustee colleague, has my concern for that been alleviated? And then my second question would be, wouldn't every committee create their own terms of reference and then bring it to the board? I think it would be very cumbersome for, for three, four, or five months from now when the trustee code of conduct is done. Then the board gets together to look at the terms of reference for all these three committees at a time when we are dealing with budget, we're dealing long-term accommodation plan, we're dealing with spec ed plan, like things get very, very busy then. So those are my two concerns, that these committees are not under the purview of the Governance Committee, and that they would be able to create their own terms of reference subject to board approval rather than have a separate meeting that the board creates them. I hope that made sense.
Yes, it does make sense, and I'm happy to respond to your question, trustee Daniele. No, the other standing committees are not answerable to the Governance Standing Committee. The only groups that are answerable to the Governance Standing Committee are those working groups which the, which the Governance Standing Committee requests to be made. So if the Governance Standing Committee puts forward a motion that says we would like to create a working group to work on, for instance, the code of conduct, then that would be a working group of the Governance Standing Committee or the Governance Documents Review Standing Committee, as, as we are proposing it to be named at this point. My, the second question, if you could refresh my memory as to what the second question was.
My second question was around two committees creating their own terms of references and then bringing them to the board rather than having a board meeting. And I will have a follow-up asking, do we currently have any working committees underneath the Governance Committee?
We do not. All of the working committees completed their work before the end of term. And terms of reference, you're quite right, should be penned by those who are on the committees, but then they are brought to the board. So if, if we're talking about the review of the terms of reference for all three committees, yes, they could be brought well before the code of conduct is completed, but that, the request of having all of the area of standing committees reviewed, I felt was important because all three of those standing committees were new in the last, I think, 48 months, 24 months. So yeah, they could be brought forward in January for, for terms of reference for, for trustees to approve at the board table, and that, that's fine. But we do need to also review the governance procedure for committees and appointments in the section that deals with standing committees to ensure that everyone is happy with that now that we've done it for a couple of years. How are we feeling about how, how it works? And I think it's important to have all the voices around the table on that. I hope that answers your question.
I think I have a little more of an understanding. Again, I wanted these three, the two committees that I'm on to stand autonomous of anything other than the board, and it seems to me that you have answered that question, and I do appreciate it. Because quite frankly, I don't want to put the work into them. If four months down the road, we're going to review it and possibly undo everything that we've done, that's one of my biggest concerns. So it does sound like they will be able to be autonomous other than they do report to the board and under the guidance of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Rocha.
Through you, Chair, to trustee Amos. I can't support this motion because when I reviewed Appendix A and the proposed terms, I did find errors. And to me, it shows that as a board, we haven't sat down and properly vetted the, the work. And I think if we're going to do work on changing terms of reference, I think perhaps we should do that at a committee of the whole to look at the terms of reference so that when it does come to the board, we're all in agreement that this is the direction we're going to go. So as it's written, as the way it's been presented, I won't be able to support the motion.
Trustee Amos.
Thank you. I'm actually in total agreement, and I'm quite willing to withdraw my motion. Well, I can't because it's already, it's not my motion anymore. But if we went to committee of the whole in January, because that's the place where I believe we would have, need to have the discussion. So if, if we want to go to committee of the whole in January to have this discussion, I'm quite willing to have it.
All right, so you can make a motion to withdraw? Your motion? And that would have to be seconded.
Okay, and then can I have a motion to move this to committee of the whole? There's nothing else on the floor at this time other than my motion.
Well, there's kind of a, I don't know if it's a replacement motion or a friendly, I don't know, but it's a second motion that's kind of crap, did what we're waiting, we have to complete what we're doing with yours first.
Well, I believe the best course, from what I've heard from everyone here, is this needs to go to committee of the whole. And I believe that needs to happen before any committee gets formed, because if we do terms of reference prior to, without, based on the old terms of reference, it's as trustee Daniele said, things got muddied last time, and committees that were formed by committee of the whole all of a sudden came under other committees. That wasn't the intent at the time, it should have come back to committee of the whole. So that's why, and that's why Jillian Takatana was asked specific questions around the whole piece of it, because I'm only bringing this forward because I wasn't the only one who had these concerns. There was, there was a number of us who all had these concerns. So that was the intent of this, to raise the concerns. So I will make a motion to withdraw my motion if there's a seconder, but I would like to see this go to committee of the whole. I cannot support moving forward with the existing terms of reference based on the information and the conversation that's going forward here.
Trustee Daniele.
Thank you for allowing me to speak a second time. And I would request also, could we please be sent the Committees and Appointments' Governance Procedure? I have been all over drive, and I cannot seem to find it. So before I agree to something that essentially has us reviewing that, I'd like to know what it is, I can't seem to find it. I appreciate that trustee Collard sent us her motion when she did, a 9:32, but it references a document that I can't, or procedure that I can't seem to find. So I would find it difficult to vote not knowing completely and totally what I'm voting on. So if that could be sent to us, I greatly appreciate it.
So, so you're, you're asking to refer your current motion to committee of the whole? Okay, so is there a seconder on trustee Amos's motion to refer her original motion to committee of the whole? And trustee Collard has sent the governance procedure. So do we have a seconder?
I don't have it yet. Point of order, I believe trustee Amos made a motion to withdraw, and now she's making a motion to defer, but the first motion wasn't seconded yet. I'm not clear on where we're at.
So the very first motion, so the motion about the, forming a governance policy?
Yes, I, I know the first.
That is on the floor first, it has a mover and a seconder.
Right.
She then said about.
Withdraw.
Referring, withdrawing it, but then.
So what I'm asking for is actually a referral to committee of the whole.
So she's adjusted her language to say, the motion hadn't been seconded yet, so she's adjusting her motion to request that the original motion be referred to the next committee of the whole meeting. And we're waiting if there is a seconder on that motion.
Point of order on that again. If this motion comes to committee of the whole, then we are looking at passing or not passing this motion at committee of the whole. That does not put us in a position of actually having a discussion about the terms of reference at committee of the whole. It is about passing this motion at committee of the whole. So as manager Carrillo has tried to explain, it's a consideration of the motion and the report attached to it. Okay, I understand now where we're at. Okay, I understand now where we're at.
Yes.
Because from what I've heard from the discussion, is people believe that this needs to come to Committee of the Whole to be discussed. That's what I've heard.
Trustee Gray, you will second that motion? Trustee Oliver?
No, sorry. Probably out of order here. I wanted to just add a few more comments to this discussion. I can wait.
So currently, the motion on the floor is to refer the current motion and attached report to Committee of the Whole, motion by trustee Amos, seconded by trustee Gray. Trustee Oliver, are your comments or questions concerning this piece?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to trustee Amos's most recent comment. My take on this is that we had a number of committees that were needed and that we believe will be continued, to be required during this term. I think what we fail to realize is that they would sunset at the end of our 2018 term, and we lack a process to reinstate them for the new term. And so I see trustee Collard's motion as a kind of a good compromise on how to facilitate that. And I think that's something we need to kind of remember, because this will continue to happen with the end and start of every term. So we need to have a solid process on how that's going to happen. And definitely, it's a discussion for the Committee of the Whole. And I think trustee Collard's motion will get us to that point, where we can then discuss each of the committees, you know, go through the terms of reference, go through the name, and work that out to set the, you know, standard for this term. So I would be supportive of trustee Collard's motion. Thank you.
Okay. So currently, on the floor, let's see if it's there. This is looking at referring trustee Amos's original motion to Committee of the Whole in January, and we're just waiting for it to come up onto the screen. And for those asking, trustee Daniele, trustee Collard has sent you the information you requested via email.
Thank you. And as I do not have anything in front of me, and I don't see the screen, can you please read the motion to me?
So the motion is to refer the motion and report for motion 22162 to Committee of the Whole for January of 2023. So 22161. There we go. Okay. Please cast your votes. Trustee Daniele?
No.
And trustee Ahmed?
Yes, Chair.
All right. So that does not pass. Votes in favor were trustee Amos, trustee Diodati, trustee Gray, and trustee Ahmed. Votes against were trustee Zhang, trustee Collard, Chair Shattleworth, trustee Baxter, vice chair Rocha, and trustee Oliver. And student trustees, oh, and sorry, and trustee Daniele, and student trustees Rogero and trustee Wang voted in favor. So now, we have to go back to the original motion. Which is where? No? So the original motion is to approve the formation of a non-statutory standing committee as outlined in report 22161. Trustee Collard has also changed her, I'll say changed her motion, but looked at this motion to find a compromise?
Yes, I put forward a compromise, and I did send it to all trustees, but that's not on the floor at this time.
Want people to have that in their mind when they're looking at this motion?
Yes.
So to approve the formation of a non-statutory standing committee as outlined in report number 22161. If everybody can please cast their vote. Oh. Trustee Oliver, that's an old question? Okay. There we go. Trustee Daniele?
No.
Trustee Ahmed?
My vote is no, please.
Thank you very much. So that, again, does not pass. And I've lost my list. So I know that the student trustees voted in favor, and trustee Amos and trustee Gray voted in favor, but the rest of the trustees voted against. So trustee Collard, would you please review the motion you have on the floor? Which is-
It's not on the floor yet, but I'm putting it forward. Be it resolved that the Governance Standing Committee be renamed the Governance Document Review Standing Committee, that all references to the Governance Standing Committee in the Committees and Appointments Governance Procedure be changed to reflect the new name, and that this committee be reinstated for 2023. Be it resolved that the Board Self-Assessment Standing Committee be reinstated for 2023. Be it resolved that the Trustees Professional Development Planning Standing Committee be reinstated for 2023. And be it resolved that the Governance Document Review Standing Committee schedule a review of the Committees and Appointments Governance Procedure to commence immediately upon completion of the review of the Code of Conduct Policy and Governance Procedure as outlined in report 22165, and I so move.
Thank, pardon? Thank you. And trustee Baxter, would you second that, please?
Yes, I would, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any discussion or debate? Trustee Gray?
Yes, thank you very much. I just want to be clear about where the term of reference review would be. Is that in that last paragraph? Schedule a committee of-
If you look at report 22165, you'll see that it's listed in the five things that need to be reviewed. There's two sections of the governance procedure that need to be reviewed, and the three terms of reference all need to be reviewed.
And now those reviews are to take place before the work of those committees commences?
No.
Okay.
Trustee Amos, followed by trustee Daniele?
I have the same concern as trustee Gray. I don't see anything about the terms of reference being mentioned here. All I see is about a procedure.
Please look at the report.
Which report?
The report that is referenced is the next item on the agenda.
Okay. And my other concern is committees moving forward without terms of reference. So basically, they're a committee without a term of reference.
Trustee Daniele?
Thank you. Again, I'm getting confused. I'm looking at the report. I'm seeing that be resolved, the Governance Standing Committee schedule a review of the Committees and reports, and then under the scope of the review, it is the terms of reference for the Self-Assessment Standing Committee and the Professional Development Standing Committee. This is reading to me that those reviews are once again coming under the Governance Committee, and that is my concern. My understanding, when I voted against the previous motions, that those terms of reference would be created by the committees, and then would be put forward to the board, not to the Standing Committee. Again, I would like to see, because these are the things that are the work of the board, I want to ensure, before I go forward and vote anything, that it's all, again, coming under the Governance Committee and leading to some of the frustrations that we saw last year, that had us talking to lawyer Tuck-Tatana as to what our options were. So if I could have clarity on that, please?
Yes, you may have clarity. The reason why it says that it's in the scope of work is because the terms of reference are appended to the governance procedure. So the work of building those terms of reference would happen within each standing committee, and you can resolve that they would be approved at the board. But then they have to be appended to the governance procedure. And so that's the only part of it that has any, anything to do with the Governance Standing Committee. It's only because it has to be appended to the governance procedure. So, yes, you would be co-creating your terms of reference with the members of your committee. You would bring them forward to the board for approval at the board. And then the Governance Committee would append them to the governance procedure. So you have the responsibility to come up with the terms of reference. You have the responsibility to bring them forward to the board. The only part that is even remotely concerning the Governance Committee is the fact that it has to be appended to the governance procedure.
Okay. So if I'm understanding it correctly, then the board would approve them and direct the Governance Committee to append them? That is what I'm looking for, because last spring, I got extremely confused with working committees and standing committees, and there were just too many going around, and I don't want to find myself in a level of frustration, again, where I gave up my summer to do all of my work, and my committee doesn't report the work that they did. That's what I'm trying to avoid. That's not a good position to be in. So thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. I hope that clarified it for everyone.
Before we move on, we'll need an extension. So it's already five past 10. Can I have, I'm thinking we have this left, and then I'm unsure, trustee Collard, if this motion passes, what will happen to report 22135? So, no, no. Yep, sorry. Manager Carrillo?
Through the chair, to all trustees. If this motion carries, parts one through three of trustee Collard's report, that motion, those motions would be redundant, because this motion strikes them. The fourth part of that motion, which establishes what the Governance Documents Review Standing Committee-
No, this is a total replace. This replaces all four pieces.
Okay, perfect. So that means really, we only have communication to the board? Long time? Long report? Nope. So if I say an extension of 20 minutes for public session, can I have a mover for that, please?
I will.
We have three. So we have a mover for trustee Gray, and I'll say trustee Daniele, you can second that. By a quick show of hands, all in favor? Wonderful, and we're extended for 20 minutes. Trustee Amos? Okay. So the motion is on the floor. Let me see if it's there. No?
Point of order?
Yes.
So if I understand correctly, the motion that is now on the floor is the motion in its entirety that was sent to us by trustee Collard at 9:32 PM. That begins be resolved that the Governance Standing Committee be renamed, and ends with be resolved that the Governance Standing Committee schedule Committee of the Review. So am I correct in that?
That's correct. So the, sorry, the motion that is on the floor is the one that was sent, as you said, trustee Daniele at 9:32, by email, by trustee Collard.
Thank you.
Point of order, before you call the vote, I would like to ask one question of clarification.
Yep. Trustee Amos?
So any terms of reference that come to the board for approval can be changed by the board?
Yes.
Okay.
Because there are 11 trustees around this board table that vote on the terms of reference.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify, because I don't believe that happened last time.
Okay. All right. The motion is now on the floor.
Yes, and trustee Daniele?
Thank you, trustee Daniele. Trustee Ahmed?
Yes, from me.
Thank you so much. I don't know where it is. It passed unanimously? Thank you very much.
My thanks to everyone for their input into this. I know that it was difficult.
Thank you so much. We are now up to item 4.2.5. With trustee Collard, are you withdrawing this motion? Rests, redundant, gone.
It's redundant, it's gone.
Okay.
I replaced it.
All right. So item 4.2.6, thank you very much, is the Striking Committee Further Reportments for 2023, report number 22160, or 162. Vice Chair Rocha, do you want to speak to this, as both of us? But if I do, I have to pass you the cap.
Go ahead. Oh.
So the motion is be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve the formation of the non-statutory standing committees contained in report 22162, Appendix B, Part A, and be it further resolved that the Halton District School Board approve trustee committee appointments as outlined in report number 22162, Appendix A. Okay. So part one of that motion is not relevant. So the motion is as stands, be it further, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve trustee committee appointments as outlined in report number 22162, Appendix A. Vice Chair Rocha, did you want to speak to this at all?
Sure. Okay. So in Appendix A of the report, you'll notice the three non-standing committees, which are the Board Self-Assessment, the going-to-be-n newly-named Governance Standing Committee, and the Trustee Professional Development. These are the three non-standing committees, and membership is listed. Trustee Amos will chair the Board Self-Assessment Committee. Trustee Collard will chair the, in quotes, Governance Standing Committee, and trustee Daniele will chair the Trustee Professional Development. So thank you to the three of you for stepping up to chair those committees, and for the members who will be part of those committees. In addition, there are three additional committees that we've had to appoint members to that are staff-led. We've got the Boundary Review Steering Committee and Boundary Review Committee for Aldershot, which is the Maplehurst and Glenview. Trustee Diodati will be the- Trustee Diodati will be the local trustee, and trustee Daniele will be the alternate. Another committee that has been struck is the Boundary Review Steering Committee and Boundary Review Committee for South Georgetown for Ethel Gardner and Silver Creek. The local trustee is trustee Gray, and the alternate will be trustee, actually, not the alternate, my apologies. The out-of-area trustee will be trustee Baxter, and that goes the same for the previous committee that I mentioned. And also, the Human Rights and Equity Advisory Committee will be represented by trustees Daniele and Amos, and the alternate trustee Ahmed.
Thank you very much. So trustee Ahmed, would you like to put this motion on the floor, please?
Yes, I do, please.
Thank you very much. And trustee Oliver, would you like to second it?
I second.
Thank you very much. Is there any debate? Seeing none, if you can cast your votes, please.
Yes, from trustee Daniele.
Thank you. Trustee Ahmed?
Yes, please.
Thank you so much, and that passes by unanimous consent. Thank you very much, everyone. All right, that brings us up to communication from the Board. We have no items for action for this evening. For information... This is, is that right? Come on, the right one? Nope. For information, we have nothing. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, that brings us to the Director's Report. Director Ennis?
Thank you, Chair Shalworth, through you and to the rest of the trustees. 2022 was a challenging year. This was the third year, that full calendar year that we've dealt with the pandemic, and the fourth school year. It's been a challenge for everyone. I know that everyone is tired and looking forward to the break. And so I just wanted to say thank you to trustees, to senior staff, to all the staff in our schools and our facilities for all the great work that they did to bring us through 2022, and we look forward to 2023. We heard tonight reports from Superintendent Fowler, Superintendent Frankovich, that we are continuing to do, to focus on our commitments in the multi-year plan, and all of them have been progressing very well. The state of the Board is strong, and so with that, I close 2022. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Ennis. Are there any questions for Director Ennis? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to communication from the chair, there is one letter attached to your agenda this evening, which is from Grand Erie District School Board, again relating to capital funding concerns that they have. As I said, it's attached to your package, and that's all for me for public session. Item 5.6, committee reports, do we have any this evening? Seeing none, that brings, oops, trustee Collard.
Thank you. To all the members of the newly reinstated Governance Documents Review Standing Committee, I will be sending out question error for you tomorrow to ascertain when you are available for our first meeting.
Thank you so much, trustee Collard. That brings us up to trustee questions and comments. Are there any for this evening? Trustee Gray?
Yes, just a very quick OBSPA report. There's recently a successful advocacy day at Queens Park where 50 members of provincial parliament and staff were approached by members of the Board of Directors of OBSPA. MPPs returned February 21, and the Board of Directors have some jobs to do between now and then to reach out and connect with MPPs. And there is just a final reminder here of the PEZ registration. Please consider going to the PEZ conference in January, and registration is now open. Thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Gray. Seeing no more questions and comments from trustees, we are up to item 5.8, which is public questions. As you are aware, during the pandemic, we tried to open up our Board for questions from the public, as there weren't able to be here in person. We created a link at the bottom of the HDSB website to allow members of the public to ask questions, particularly concerning government, governance issues. Trustee Vice Chair Rocha, are there any questions from the public this evening?
For you, Chair, yes, there is one. And it really asks about what time, it talks about, asks about our meeting times. So for the general public to know, we do meet on the first and third Wednesday of every month in public session. Our public meeting starts at 6, and then we quickly break into private session, and at 7, we come out, again for public. Our meetings are usually scheduled from 7 till 10, but as you can see, tonight, where we've gone over 10. And if you're looking to see what is on our agenda, we do post our agendas on Friday afternoons for a Wednesday meeting, and that information can be found on our website. And that is all.
Thank you very much. And again, just to make the public aware, there are numerous ways you can get in touch and have your questions answered by trustees. The first and probably the most efficient way of doing it is to contact your local trustee. All of our contact details are available on the HDSB website. Alternatively, you can look at delegating the Board in terms of governance issues. And then finally, there is the form at the bottom of the page to submit your questions online. Thank you very much. So thank you everyone for engaging in our meeting this evening. As we move into the holiday season, I encourage everyone to take some time, rest, and spend some time with the people that you love. Trustees, we still have a little bit of business to attend to in private sessions, so I'm going to ask us all to rise into private. Staff, you are free to go, and thank you everyone for a very productive meeting. I need a motion to move into private. Trustee Gray, by a show of hands, can I get consent? A second there? Trustee Baxter, show of hands? Awesome. We'll take a couple of minutes, because we will need to extend again. Thank you very much.
Back in public session, can I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Amos.
(laughing)
All those in favor?
(laughing)
Oh, there you go.
There we go.
Seconded by Trustee Gray, all those in favor?